We're coming out of executive session back into open session. It's seven oh two. I will read the remote script, which tonight becomes a little more important as we are having a public hearing. And comments will be taken from both public and those in the room. We want to hear you. So as a preliminary matter, I am Chris Silver, the Chair of the Mayor's Select Board. And permit me to confirm that all members in presence anticipated on the agenda, our president can hear me. Mike Stevens.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this this open meeting of the Mayor's Select Board is being conducted. Live and in Zoom, and the speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. And the Chair may allow for the public to provide provide comments remotely as well. The Select Board would like to hear public comments, and if there are further actions required by the Board, the Chair or the meeting manager will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the Board may, if we are able within the confines of the open meeting logs, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliver it on the matter later. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that people may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer as anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. We recommend that the members and public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless otherwise noted. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, let me cover some of the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure exact, ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they have concluded their remarks, we will go down the list of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair. Take care to identify yourself. For items with public comments, after the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by name and address. And once we have a list of the public commentators, we will call them each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. And that's that. And so move on to the first item on our agenda and supplese of allegiance. If everyone in the room could stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, equal to all, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, now we will go into the meeting meeting and first up is public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room? No, we don't. And do we have any public comments online?
Chris, this is Patty Chambers. I'd like to make a public comment.
Okay.
I know you're speaking to Open Table later on in the agenda. And so first of all, Patty Chambers, twenty-two Mayberry Road. As a resident and a board member of Open Table, I really hope that you support the increase in use of town property for the amount of time requested. Here's a significant increase in demand for food distribution, and it will really help our volunteers to get more food out to the community.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I see Alana is here as well. We hand up Alana.
She was, she did.
She just moved. No, she flipped.
Oh.
That happened. Okay.
Sorry, I was too fast with my hand, my virtual hand. Alana Gustafson, seventeen Rio Road. So on your agenda this evening, as Patty had said, you will be speaking to Open Table with a request for use of town-owned property. I would like to also voice my support for this request and this organization. They are providing a much-needed service for our town and surrounding communities. They always do their best to minimize the impact of their drive-through pantry on downtown. And part of that effort involves hundreds of volunteers who come to downtown Maynard every week, which is, of course, a great benefit to our local businesses. So I encourage you to support their request this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else online who has a public comment this evening? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, item four on the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve consent agenda item A as presented contingent upon appearance of all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidance authorized using traditional safety procedures approved.
Okay. Okay. Great. Is, oh, are we, how many think for this? Is there anybody online to talk about it?
The Pooch's in the Park.
The Park?
It's, I mean, it's, but the question I have is just, I mean, I guess it's far enough out. But the one question I, I think last year they ran a new rain issue, so I didn't know if they had a rate. There was, there's no rated issue here, but I didn't know.
Yeah, they didn't submit one, but no, it's still had a named one.
Okay. Right. All right, I guess you guys will be responsible for making sure all the other stuff is in order before they go insurance and all that stuff. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about the Pooches in the Park fortress? All right. Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor. Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Good luck to Pooches in the Park. All right, number five is the use of town property pro park. Someone like to make a motion? In this one.
I'm confused about the motion.
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of context. So we, Dr. Greg and I, and I, I'll, the board had called when there had been a time when Maynard Public Schools had submitted a request to use pro park. It is sort of an informal understanding, but we have since been cooperating with the school department to implement this new park and field scheduling system called ML Schedul, software, ML Scheds. And so with that, you know, Greg, Greg is, is in logging in and he sure enough is in the queue for the field of Maynard Public Schools. And so we want, I wanted to make sure that we were, you know, sort of abiding by this new system we're, we're implementing and keeping everything on the up and up. So I want to make it sort of present to the board that this is a request like any other request to use what is under the boards or something as opposed to the schools pro park. But that being said, you can see that below it, I've offered a different motion, more like maybe, or maybe an additional motion to then just kind of go back to the way this was where the Maynard Public Schools have a different relationship for use of that particular field. And they can go through your scheduling, through the Town Administrator's Office. Again, this, this, this like hosted, the Chair hosted scheduling with some ML Scheds. But it would fall under the Town Administrator's, really to make sure it's not, not scheduled, we're not over scheduling, which, which we weren't doing in the first place. And we certainly won't be doing because of the shared schedules. So however you all want to get it, like if you, but so that's why I was too.
So. All right, so you're asking us, we're being asked to approve these, this series of events on, in the file, in the, in the, in the board docs. And then, and then afterwards, we are asking us to approve not having to do that again, but leaving it up to you guys and the schools to make the schedule happen the way it's supposed to happen.
That, that is one way I proposed it, but however you guys.
I think that's, does anybody think that's not a good way to do it?
On the line.
I think that, I think that's helpful because especially the, the new software that's coming up and, and the approvals, I think we kind of tripped over that a little bit last, last time we were talking about it, that how, how is that going to work when they have, you know, where they have to come to us, but Greg's doing the scheduling or whatever, so it definitely cleans that part up a little bit.
Yeah, I was actually surprised to see this. I knew that way, so.
Well, that, right, well, that, that's, I want to make sure I look at it like, I want to make it all together.
All right. So would anybody like to make a motion in the first part?
I will move to approve the use of pro park by Maynard Public Schools for athletics, baseball practice from March twenty-fifth through May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as presented contingent upon adherence of all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines authorized and usage of different signatures approved. Sorry.
Seconded. Any further conversation about the listed schedule items? All those in favor. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Now we're on to item two. Anyone like to make a motion in the second part of this, move this item number five, A.
I will move to authorize the Town Administrator's Office to approve the use of pro park by Maynard Public Schools contingent upon scheduling and adherence to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines.
Second.
Anybody have any questions in the second part?
Yeah, we agree that that is in perpetuity until we change the rule.
And you don't, you're not sending a memo on something like that?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? So that's been moved, made and seconded. All those in favor. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
And I am a yes as well. So, all right, thank you for that.
No, thanks for everything.
And then let's get to this most controversial item, number, number five B, Open Table. Someone like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the request submitted by Open Table dated February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four as presented, extending the drive-through food pantry hours Tuesdays from twelve-thirty to six-thirty PM and Thursdays from eleven AM to four-thirty PM. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion needed? Or do you like to have any discussion about the extra hour and a half?
I think Alexander's on.
Okay.
Yeah, it introduces.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. Great. Thank you for including us on your agenda, and we just wanted to join in case anyone has any questions and just have a chance to say hello. I haven't been able to meet all of you in person, so nice to be here.
Does anybody have any questions for Alexandra?
Quick question. What drives the differentiation in time between Tuesdays and Thursdays? Four-thirty versus six-thirty on Thursday? Is there, is it just tradition or is there something else that makes Thursdays not as, not as crowded or not as needed to go as late?
Thanks. That's a great question. Both my predecessor, our staff, and all of our volunteers observed that the local businesses on Main Street are busier on Thursday evenings. And we have no interest in interrupting or getting in the way of that, and so we opted to use earlier hours when there seems to be less traffic, less congestion, less, less parked cars, et cetera.
Makes sense to me. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Open Table?
I would just like to add a comment. I've had the opportunity to volunteer at Open Table quite a lot over the last few months and just wanted to express my, you know, how impressed I am with their operation, how they work, the volunteers they get, the way they move things, the way they work with the clients. It's, it's just been a, a treat to watch them at work. Okay. Thank you, Alexandra. Yeah.
All right. So anyone else? Any other questions? Any other comments? Any other comments in the room? Okay, let's, let's make a vote. All those in favor. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much, Alexandra, and thank you to Patty and Alana for your comments and support.
Thank you, Open Table.
Thank you.
All right. My watch tells me that it is past seven fifteen, so we can open the public hearing, and we have a public hearing tonight for water and sewer rates, and we have to, as required by law, read the public hearing notice. And the notice reads as follows. The Maynard Select Board will hold the public hearing on Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven fifteen PM to be held in person and remotely for the purpose, purposes of discussing the town water use bylaws, specifically water and sewer rates. The public is invited to attend. One ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Mass. zero one seven five four, in via Zoom, using the access instructions on the posted agenda to be found at www dot townofmaynard dash ma dot go. And the public hearing is now open at seven seventeen. We're still watering sewer.
Good evening, everyone. Justin Margol, Public Works Director, it's the every time of year again. Greg Wilson's gonna assist me with the PowerPoint presentation. I'm assuming the Board has had a chance to review the PowerPoint presentation and the memo. I should have made those memos if possible, but there's a lot of information in regards to water and sewer. I'm happy to have a great discussion about something that's very important to PPW and our industry. We work in five-year blocking increments when we plan. So our CIPs are designed, so our capital improvement plans are designed in five-year blocking increments. So five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and then we pick to move on to fifty-year with much larger dynamic projects. This rate conversation tonight will be the end of my first five-year block with the town meeting. There's a lot of goal setting that we look at when we're talking about the end of a five-year. We look back and capture what we've gotten anticipated accomplishing. I will say, no matter which way the Board goes with tonight's rate recommendation, we've made major hurdles and major success over the course of the last four years, and we could do that five-year block. But we've accomplished many components that are part of sanitary water survey and sewer survey conducted by the E.P. It's an auditing system of our operating systems, our app, et cetera. And they rate things that are recommended conditional and, and in violation. Over our four years plus this year, we have met all of our conditions, all of our violations, and we have actually started to correct it to the sum of our recommendation. That's a goal. That's something that in previous five-year block increments, we didn't accomplish in the town. We didn't accomplish as a water and sewer utility. That is really hard to quantify, but for us, it's, those are, those are issues that allow us to proactively approach moving forward and dynamically allow us to address some of the aspects or the lack of developmental aspects that our utility gets into. So with that being said, I'd like to present our FY twenty-five water and sewer rates, our recommendation from the Department of Public Work. Ah, Public Works, excuse me. Within our FY twenty-five rates, we'll kind of have some high-level requests, one of those being the last full-time employee as our five-year staffing operational plan, which if you remember, some of you, actually four of you have been on the board, I might break you here to this. Our staffing plan incorporated five full-time employees over the course of that five-year window. We did some operational tips within year three, but this last full-time employee will actually meet our operational staffing plan. So this would fulfill a five-year block. Within that, we had to, we had to account for something that wasn't completely foreseen when we were forecasting, which was the drastic change in electric costs. So we're having to take on a thirty-six percent increase due to thirty-four percent increase in the power purchase agreement and four percent increase in the distribution. We're seeing that across your budget. You're seeing that in the bill fund. You can see that in the school budget. Just like both of those giant budgets, so does the water and sewer. We are actually one of the heaviest electrical users in this entire community as we operate both our water treatment facility and our water treatment. So we, we did have a predictive model, but it did not incorporate thirty-six percent. So typically, like anything, kind of think back to the solid waste when we had to change over our contract. We took a hit upfront, but then it was controlled after that. So the beauty with this is we will have a control mechanism for the next three years as our purchasing block with the power. We're also incorporating lead service line replacement funding, you know, and design them properly. We have to anticipate the lead copper rule revisions, which will adhere the utility to offer support to residents. Even though the lead and or copper rule revisions have a significant impact on private property, the utilities are held accountable to provide resources for those in need. So typically seen in much larger water districts and or MWRA programs of zero percent financing are typically offered for residents who have lead service lines. So they would work through a program similar to the one we would develop where we would pay for the service upfront and they would back pay us through billing processes with zero percent financing, which in the end allows the utility to come into compliance with all who assists our customers. This is a small incremental line. It's actually only twenty-five thousand dollars. We felt confident with that small amount. I know that doesn't seem a small amount, but in the absence of forty-three hundred customers, where we believe that there is almost no lead lines left in Maynard. As of right now, we're still going through our letting copper survey or our lead line survey, and we are at a thirty-three percent ruin. We have not had an indication of a lead service line at this point. That doesn't mean there's not lead goos next somewhere in a service line or things of that nature, but we, the revisions haven't identified how we to identify that or if we're doing. So just be advised that at this point, we're conducting that process and we are very successful, but at the same time, we're baking into, into our FY twenty-five operating budget, the allowance for us to assist any of our customers and meet the lead and cover that EPA and E.P. are required. Within FY twenty-five, we are anticipating bonding. We're actually working on bonding as we speak. And when I say bonding for water, it is our five million and our million-dollar bands that actually haven't been bonded yet. They're part of the well for a project. We approved those over two years plus. We're at the point where we're going to bond them. We're bonding them with the agreement of school at the same time to reduce overall cost to the town. With that being said, we'll have the actual debt and interest payments. So we had to adjust, we were projecting the full year to adjust the rest. Overall, that's what makes up the increase in, in the water budget of seven percent. Next. Based on that analysis and something that I was just speaking with Jeff is we predicted seven percent increases in our last year's model consistently in water. We have been highly successful in our reorganization and our staffing plan that our new resources, such as the water superintendent and our dedicated administrative assistant for the water, water and sewer utility, have been highly successful in our self-auditing of our metering program. As you, as customers may know, we've launched our Neptune platform customer interface. While behind the scenes, we worked adamantly to review meters that weren't in operation, radio reads that weren't, weren't being triggered. We were able to actually capture over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars combined significant amount with water, both two hundred and water, fifty in sewer in revenue without a new custom. This was strictly behind the need to everywhere. So we were missing out on revenue because we didn't have the resources available to audit our system. Now I will tell you this, that audit consisted about five percent revenue. So we're going to continue that audit moving forward. We focused on our highest users, which are commercial users. Those are our biggest meters. So we're hoping to see significant revenue changes continue, but we can't guarantee it. But it is highly successful and was able to actually reduce our original goal of seven percent now to, excuse me, down to a vol- five percent. I believe total five point five percent. Again, I'll add that service electricity, the last full-time employee, less of its library, they add to the revenue requirements for water next week. Within sewer, we're getting to the point where we are about to issue our RFP for our sewer service contract with wastewater treatment plant operations and management. We don't know those costs yet. We won't know then until July first, but we have contingencies based in our FY twenty-five. We're also accounting for the full-time position. As you may recall, our water and sewer staff is split fifty-fifty. The same would be done with this full-time position. There were, it would be fifty percent through or fifty percent water, and we're also competing with high electricity. And kind of re, re-trigger the point when we're talking about metering, why we received two hundred thousand dollars in excess revenue based on our auditing for water versus sewer. Sewer received about fifty thousand. The difference is sewers metering systems act a little different. They're actually triggered by the water system. So a lot of that was tiered system versus base charge. Next, please. So our rate structures, as we typically do, we try to provide the Board with two different style rate structures and rate requests. We can do a base seven percent across the board, or it's actually five point nine total. Or we can do, or we can do a tiered system, which we've been doing over the past four years. Our tiered system has been identifying that our water base fee has some address sewer base fee. We've been doing that in incremental blocks, as you recall. We've been doing that at five dollars per year as opposed to fifteen, wanting to try to catch up. The sewer discrepancy with water was, when I started about four plus years ago, was close to twenty dollars discrepancy in the base charge. We, we try to adhere our tiered system to alleviate or reduce the impact to our lowest users. We're trying to encourage water conservation while also understanding that our lower users tend to be our elderly, tend to have fixed incomes, tend to be in a situation financially more constrained than those that have luxuries such as irrigation system pools or, you know, that this enough to use water. So our tiered system approach, as you can see, our recommendations based off of our model that we've used for the past four years, when we do a tiered structure, where the highest users pay more than the low users. But we, we ran both scenarios for you as well. Right, next, please. Within this, we're met, the Department of Public Works is recommending scenario one A, which is water tiered system. And as you can see, it's seven percent, and it's seven percent based off of a tiered situation. Next, please. One B is just a flat rate, seven percent across the board, no tier. We're not making that recommendation, but we like to provide that for context and or if the Board is considering changing approach. Next, please. Scenario one, three percent sewer and a tiered, and a tiered increase. This is in combination with water, which is why we're seeing a five point nine percent increase. So maybe confusing when you give me six, seven or a lot. So it's seven on water, but total is five point nine. So we were able to reduce our need in sewer and dedicate most of our resources to our biggest constraint, which is water. Next. And then one A is just that, that look as a whole. I, you know, in my four years, David makes it a great point. I always said it's the same bill, it's the same wallet, right? So we tri, we typically try to make it known to the Board what the impact is within that bill set. Our average user will see a difference of twenty-five ninety-five per quarter over the course of the year with scenario one A combined water and sewer impact. Our low users will typically see about six dollars and forty-nine cents per quarter over the course of their, with rate requirement. One B, as you can see, the difference here, typically you would see a lower scenario for low usage here. This is that flat fee system. But as we consistently move in the direction of a tiered system over time, we have to make up revenue on the back end. That's why you're seeing the low usage here start to creep up in difference percentage. But we're not at a point where the DPDW is recommending a flat fee across the board or a flat increase across the board, but I do prepare you in the next three or four years, we're going to have to make that adjustment because we can't get to a point where tier four supports the revenue at that point. That's why we're doing incremental blocks of base fee. So that base fee is helping to reduce the low rate from catching up. Next, please. So two A is the six percent water revenue stepwise. This is another scenario for consideration. As you know, there is the full-time employee, where we incentivize our staffing operational plan. But I am aware that those are conversation pieces, so I wanted to provide the Board with a scenario that does not include that last full-time employee and a scenario that does. Our recommendation includes that last full-time employee to meet our operational plan. But I wanted the Board to understand or at least see what the difference is in value versus not in regards to what the cost is on the customer. So two A is the six percent water increase versus the seven, and that reduces the full-time employee. Next, please. Two B is the same thing. That's just the level increase across the board as opposed to the tiered system, but again, that would reduce the full-time employee. Yeah. And then this is sewer. The two percent model is the reduction of the full-time employee per sewer. So combined water sewer impacts of that scenario, as you can see, twenty-three, twenty- So combined water sewer impacts of that scenario, as you can see, twenty three, twenty seven per quarter for the average user, six forty nine per quarter for our users. Next please. And then there is one, as part of our modeling uh process, we captured uh the fact that we got fifteen sewer only customers. When I say sewer only, they are not tied into our public drinking water system. So these are out of town customers as well. So they are customers that we serve and stow in and active. Um they're typically right on the border. If you're unfamiliar with our water utilities meter um sewer. Everything sewer is based off of low meter water. The only way to reduce that is through a deduct meter, which is tied to ultimately use water on. So water in, water out. That's how we meter sewer. Um we captured the fact that we have out of town sewer only customers that are only paying the base fee. So te- typically they're actually adding water and effluent to our system far beyond the capacity of a base fee. So we have decided to incrementally ask or. Include in our um in our rate increase that the out-of-town sewer-only customers pay an average meter rate. It would be uh um in cooperation, I believe, with a hundred and thirty dollar uh base charge. So that would capture the costs associated with our average sewer using within the town. This again, this only affect fifteen sewer customers. The revenue is not significant. It's more of a fair and equitable means across the board and that's what we're trying to capture.
Fifteen out of town customer?
Yes, fifteen sewer only customers and they're all out of town and they're all out. Next please. So um in summary, um pressure on, yeah, we have high pressure on the revenue requirements based off of um the debt. That's coming uh in front of us. We anticipated it well. I will say our forecasting was pretty close on. As I was discussing with Jeff, we're off about fifty thousand dollars from a projection, which we're able to capture in this year's revenue. This will pay for the entirety of our well for a treatment plant project as a whole. We will not pay for it moving forward. It's already captured in the rates. If these rates are approved, we are not looking forward. We're actually paying for it already. So we're not going to see incremental increases in debt unless we bring on new projects or new debt. This is part of our financial model and it's been very successful. As you can see over the past four years. We've had a steady decline in the flattening or a plateau of our water and sewer runs as a whole. And that's due to fiscal planning in advance for us in three after every fiscal planning. So we, this model has been very successful and we're very proud of it. Um we're gonna continue to work on that within our next five-year block. So as you heard me talk about at the beginning of this meeting. We'll start to develop our next five-year block. Our next five-year block still matches our total master plan. Our four-phase water uh capacity brewing plan. So as indicated in the memo, our next steps are phase two, which is Rockland Avenue. The well sources treatment plan operates very similar to well for it or treatment plan operators. We are still finalizing well for it. So please be aware that we anticipate that being done uh in April, but it may be extended to June uh based off. Some uh annual decision secret for the view of the next uh the next media. Um so I like to make sure that we all are aware that OMR, when I say OMR, I mean Old Marlboro Road Treatment Plant. Phase three, which is our largest um treatment plant process upgrade and um. Water capacity aspect of our four-phase water capacity improvement plan, uh student improvement. As part of that, we have decided to postpone that funding. Part of the reason we're both calling that funding mechanism is twofold. Rockland's in front of us. And the need for Rockland has never been more vital, based off of um zoning changes, economic development initiatives and housing demand. We are being inundated by developers for the first time in four years and seeing real developers come in the door with real hard um. Schematic plans looking to develop in multiple locations that we've already explored many times. So as a town, we need to be prepared. As a utility, we absolutely need to be informed. We want to build it and then they will come up, let them build it and we have to catch up like we did with Main Cross. So um as part of that, OMR's postponement is twofold. Rockland is phase two and is absolutely our vital approach. And setting outside all of our funding towards that priority is is our main goal. During our last two to three years, we have seen a shift. MWA recently um finalized the feasibility study. For the possibility of the Metro West region to connect to their system. Maynard falls within the Metro West region. And so does it many of our fellow budding communities such as Acton Conference, Sudbury, Lincoln, et cetera, Burlington, Connecticut. It is a far-reaching regional aspect. With that being said, that is still years away. But if we're talking about proactively financially um providing forecasting. Right now, we're not comfortable setting aside money for OMR. That's not the approach. We are comfortable putting all our, all our funding into Rockland because no matter what. Whether we hook up to MWA in the future or we stay strong and stay on OMR, we will need Rockland. We will need a mixed treatment process. We will have to blend our water even with MWA. Rockland now gives us the quickest turnaround for a secure source to allow for you to develop. Um. The third bullet point is really uh the adoption of the charge for the sewer-only customers, again, minor, but. It looks larger or it looks more impactful than it really is. Uh but it really is um. Very similar to a all four plus Mike five of you play pay for sewer, though it's shit there. Um our recommended rate, there's revenue requirements, it balances somehow balances our budgets across the board. It allows us to continue to move forward. Uh as opposed to being stagnant or behind. Uh I like to say that when I started Maynard's Water and Sewer Utility over four years ago with one step forward, two steps back. Ten years before that, it was zero step forward, three steps back. And I would like to say after this five-year block, I feel like we're two steps forward and step back. I think that's progress. It should be something we should be proud of. It was not easy. I know it was not easy for a lot of you. It's not easy for us as well. We understand these are hard times. We understand these are hard conversations. Of the success of Ben Jones and its continued uh its continued success will only allow us as a community to grow. Um grow with confidence, grow with planned approach, allow proper development to a last. To have easier conversation when it comes to the overall to the future. So that is much.
Okay. All right.
I have a question about Rockland.
Yes.
Um did? And and forgive me if I'm misremembering this, but I feel like. Rockland was not really successful when we went to try to. Go down same well, right? Because hydraulics had changed.
Hmm.
Um so but are we confident that there is something there to?
I'll just kind of give you a little more context on that just so. We were unsuccessful re-drilling a collapsed well.
Correct.
So not necessarily hydraulics, more of the casing. So the hydraulics of that vein change, but I think of it as a cylinder.
Yep.
And the bedrock collapsing on that particular well. I am also suspect of bedrock wells. We do actually have, as part of the original Rockland um exploration, there's a well that was pump-tested. That never went in um to the original design because they had enough wells that met the design capacity. So technically, we have a well that's already been slightly permitted, slightly piloted. That's actually adjacent to the vault here. With that being said, as part of that original Rockland design, they did not explore. The upland area across the street from Rockland. So if you can imagine this, if you all know Rockland now. As you go down Rockland Ave, you will see the old abandoned house that was demolished. Which is now a site for exploration, which it was not before. Then you see our treatment plant. On the right, you'll start to see our wells. On the left, that was never explored. One, because at the time, so luckily for me, I have two full-time employees that have worked here for over thirty years in the water department. So they remember the board before you would have worked. When that happened, Conservation Commission and the Water Sewer Commissioner and Select Board were at all. So the Conservation Commission did not entertain the exploration of a well source on property. That they are under their jurisdiction in an upland area. I do not believe that's the same case today. I believe if we had a conversation, we have a significant amount of DPW property that we could do a land swap for, no problem. So we are exploring alternative options which would not be bedrock. They should be traditional green uh gravel, excuse me. Uh greens and gravel uh ground source wells, which is typical of our Old Marlboro Road, our well for A. Those are your traditional well sources. With the reason that we're hyper-focused on Rockland is. Rockland will require the least amount of treatment plant modifications, which is the costliest endeavor. The well sources are costly, but they're not that costly. It's the permitting behind them that is a time lapse. So we have both of those issues at Old Marlboro. So there's no time constraint. There's a bigger time constraint with Old Marlboro. Based off of new well sources and a current well, but it matches rock. So it's not a time issue. Old Marlboro needs an entire new treatment. That's a significant cost. Rockland Ave needs treatment plant upgrades, very similar to well for it. So you're talking about five, six million dollars worth of modifications. Technically, Rockland Ave is designed for a million gallons a day. Because we have a failed well there, we're actually producing water in that treatment plant at point five million gallons a day. We have excess treatment capacity already built into the treatment plant that is not utilized. So that's the quickest turnover. That plan is also a lot, can allow us to do something very similar to what we just did at Water Treatment Plant. Uh for, which is well for a project, is a recycle backwash tank. Which actually allows us to recapture about ten to fifteen percent of the water moves as part of our process cycle. So without adding a new permitted site, we're actually recapturing water that we're technically dumping into the ground. So this is a very similar model and it can be done roughly for a very similar cost, but similar costs in four years. Should be around twelve, fifteen million dollars, where we should be able to capture. Two of the well sources and run that plan at a million gallons a day. And that is the quickest turnaround for us to consider developments such as the Stratus area or the Cunning area. The Hingfield project you're seeing like one fifteen Main Street to Port Parnell. Right now, we can consistently handle one or two of those per year in our model. We cannot handle a large development that you're seeing in active the four hundred units. We can eventually. Rockland Ave would open that door for powder mill or quarterware, the MTA zoning. Again, those are other conversations, but our utility wouldn't be the hindrance of that. And that's part of that that overall goal. With that also being said, is if we did move to MWA. My recommendation would be to abandon Old Marlboro Road Treatment Plant as a whole.
Hmm.
That entire site could be redeveloped for new growth. Again, Toven Drive neighborhood, you know what the houses look like over there? Very similar situation. Um if MWA doesn't work out. We're at least allowing ourselves to build a customer base. So if we're allowing development, we're also adding customers to a utility, which help and which helps over time. Deflect or plateau the rates for Old Marlboro. If we did Old Marlboro today with forty three hundred customers. You'd be paying exponentially more than if we did it with my customers or fifty five hundred. So this is the, this has always been our four-phase plan. We've thoroughly reviewed it uh multiple times. We've incorporated it on MWA. As you may recall, if you haven't read Paul McCarthy's newsletter, we like to now rephrase um phase three as phase three and phase three. Because we are, they're still developing. And as you know, I'm sure I talk to him quite often. MWA is. When will we know if MWA is real or not? So part of it is waiting on not to live, but in a singular approach versus a regional approach. I would not be comfortable bringing to town a meeting. A Warren article that asked the select board to negotiate with MWA without proof documentation of. That being a highly viable fiscal choice and a highly viable asset choice. So part of our next phases, as we start to move forward with that, is we're waiting on uh scope costs. For a feasibility study to incorporate Maynard's master plan, water master plan. Our financial structure versus MWA's financial structure, what the costs would be for connection because we would have to bear that cost or regional bear that cost. Part of the reason that that scope has been some of the late, as Mike knows, we haven't met in a while. And Mike actually um sits in with me on some of the MWA conversations. Part of that is the collaboration with all the communities to try to reduce cost. So can we have that feasibility study done, not just for Maynard, our Maynard's time just for Maynard? Or can we do that in a collaborative approach of three towns, four towns? So we uh we're working with um some of the major players that are still moving this forward. One is Concord. Two is Sudbury. Three is Maynard. I would actually say Maynard and Concord one, two. Sudbury is the key linchpin, but we are working with many over there quite often to try to um come up with an MOU or an O A. That shares cost load. Um we're also in competition with the North Shore and the South Shore. So this is like an ever. Moving dynamic process, yet never moves. That makes sense. So we're waiting for certain players to jump into the ship. We are not. So my consultants are putting together a scope strictly for Maynard. We haven't paid for it. We haven't even, I haven't even attempted to come to you yet with. With the cost margins, but we're not waiting. If we have to make a decision, if there, if the regional approach fails, I will still bring to the board a conversation of a feasibility study for Maynard to pursue that. And if so.
Maynard to pursue, MWA alone.
Yes.
Okay, um let's separate out these things. What is uh? How will we know if the regional push here at Metro West is selected or improved versus the north or south?
So it's funny, MWA is not approving anybody, so who is he? That's the, that's a good point. Right, yeah, so technically, yeah, technically, um. A lot of the original two regions were the North Shore and the South Shore. The North Shore and the South Shore approached MWA through their legislative points. So their House of Representatives, their senators actually begged MWA to have to do this feasibility study for North Shore and South Shore. The towns themselves, the locales, weren't interested. The opposite was the effect from Metro West. We as superintendents, DPW directors, found out about this and we approached MWA and said. Can you please incorporate us within this study? Have you even explored the idea of Metro West? Are you even aware that Metro West is seeing a lot of the urban sprawl, just like North and Salt Shore, which we also have limited um. Water capacity inside loan utilities. They took that into consideration and adopted it, which is why we're in, what the Metro West is in the feasibility study. Our hope was that MWA would leave this charge, they have excess capacity. The problem is, I think they're just doing this exercise to need to stay cool. So we have engaged Kate and Jamie to make sure that they are well aware from the top coming down that this is a viable option for us. Not just Maynard, but the Metro West area. We have also incorporated our local area planning councils to try to start this process as well. It can't just come from us. It has to come from multiple angles. At this point, MWA has made no. Commitment to anybody and they won't. They're waiting for all the locales to commit to that, which is the pre-application process. In order for us to do the pre-application process, we have to have a town meeting vote that allows the select board.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. I just want to get the region versus region before we move into random stuff. So are we in a race against the other regions to? Do coordination before they accept that to get sucked up?
We are, but. It's, so MWA has not said that they will only serve one region. But they are teasing that. They have their capacity is in excess of twenty one million gallons a day. Their mantra is whoever builds the twenty one million gallons a day, so be it.
Aren't they incentivized though as well by the fact that we are, um our region is. Uh much closer. Uh uh literally on the map to where their piping already is. So therefore, the whole, the entirety of the project would not be creating a pipeline per se that goes from. Uh wherever the local MWA town might be, Marlboro, I don't know if they are or not.
No, yeah, the closest pipeline is actually Framingham today.
So Framingham, first of all, from Framingham up to Saugus versus Framingham through to our area. Uh billions of dollars if not.
Well, even our project is a billion. But so in that premise, Dave, that was our, as a regional approach. Meaning our collective in Metro West was. It's, it's. Cost advantageous for you to pick Metro West. We were under the assumption that MWA was gonna put financial skin in the game. They only did the feasibility study and then they said, this is the estimated cost. You got to figure out how to pay for it. They're not paying for anything. They're not paying for any infrastructure. So now we're at a situation of original approach, which is very rare in the state of Massachusetts. We brought in Stantec, I actually brought Stantec's uh financial team that is very used to this. They, they're based in Colorado, doing. They, they're based in Colorado, doing this for areas such as California, Michigan, where they actually do regionalized approaches. And we, they presented to our entire Metro West, um, collaboration with the idea that one, the only way to do this is you have to have an M O U agreement between all these communities. That's pretty much step one, but we also have to understand what's the cost bearing. So it's not simplistic, and Maynard may only need one million gallons a day, Concord may need three. Should we pay the same exact amount for the feasibility study as Concord? Is Concord's demand on emergency basis or is their demand on a day by day basis? Everything has a little different dynamic. But part of that is it's too large a cost for state funds. So the state revolving fund won't pay for a billion dollar project. So I will take a collaboration of federal funds, state funds, localized funds to pay for the pipeline. M W R A has made it very clear that I'm paying for it, whether it's North Shore, South Shore or us. Uh, so that's part of the stall. So how do we resolve a one point one billion dollar problem? How do we resolve being one of the first regional water districts slash non-water districts in the entire state? So we're trying to bang down barriers and hurdles that don't exist. I mean, that, uh, we're actually breaking barriers and hurdles because those factors don't exist in the state. So I have high hopes for it. I think we sometimes need to entice them. If they know that we're in the pre-application process, which doesn't think, I mean, but part of it is, hey, we're in, they're willing to do more. But they're not going to commit to anything until we commit to them. So that's why we're looking at both ends, regional or local, and we'll do a cost scenario of both.
Who, how is M W R, how is M W R A leadership selected? How does that process work?
So they're quasi-state, they have a board of trustees, well, the board of trustees is made up of, um, local, um, governance that is part of M W R A system. So like if we were an M W R A community, Jeff Plumber could be on the board of trustees as part of that approach. So they have done some incentives, they have waived their entrance fees and they've waived them to two thousand twenty seven. That's, it's part of the memo suggests that's that five to seven million dollar reduction.
From the Mitch Spod right there, but there's no state kind of appointment from anything from the governor's office or whatever, or who?
There, there is, there's, I'm only because I checked the website because I wanted to make sure. Cause I, I, I know of it as the agency and I, and some kind of time, you'll hear about whoever is going to appoint it to the agency, whatever, but. Okay, from the M W R A website, it's governed by eleven member board of directors who are appointed by the governor. Um, or directly or indirectly by local officials in M W R A, cus- customer communities, which is what Justin was doing there. So, um.
What's the split there? How many are appointed by the community and how many by the governor?
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, so, uh.
Or pipeline.
Yeah, you, you only need to go with the dollars.
But I, I don't need to know tonight, but that's a question I'd like to know the answer to.
There's a couple that are, one of the governor, a couple are like more regionalized.
So let me.
What's that?
You're nail it right on that. Let me go back to my initial question was, what's the timeline? And I know you don't have the whole thing for the next step. When should we expect to see two or the local or regional?
So once we have a feasibility study in play, one that relies strictly on Maynard and one that has a potential regionalization approach. That's two. Yeah, so, well, one is regional, one is local. Two total, yes, but maybe not two. So if I can't get a region to buy in, I'm not going to look. So we'll at least move forward with the singular feasibility study while we're still collaborating with the regional approach, um. And that aspect should hopefully be within the next year. And then we would have a harder conversation of how we want to move this forward. Do I move forward with our own phase three or do we want to move forward with continued pursuit of M W R A? It does not hurt the community to do the pre-application process. Preapplication process is somewhat of a guarantee and it is now free. So as part of that, you are also enticing M W R A to find a way to connect to it. We have to entice them to want to connect to it. But now there's no entice. There is multiple options. The feasibility study identifies the region, which is identifying the schematic design. That schematic design is taking into assumption that all those communities would tie in. If half of those communities don't tie in, that schematic design is worthless. There is multiple communities, Dave, that are not far from us, as they've alluded to, Marlboro, Framingham, Wayland. With literally the Wayland pipeline is, if Sudbury bought it, then it's our connection. We don't need anybody else. Like I like Concord, I like Al, but if Sudbury ties in and we're, we're, we're right there and hopefully they can, Concord gets tied into us. But it's like a domino effect, so all our, all our focus is on Sudbury. And between us and the pipeline. Yep. And Sudbury, as you probably say in the past, water rich. When I say water rich, I mean water resource grid. They don't need water capacity. They are making this consideration very similar to Concord with the treatment issues we're going to continue to see moving down in the future. And their exploration of this is, um, potentially on an emergency basis. But if they're capable of taking on an emergency basis, there's many ways this can then count. If we can make a hard connection, we could potentially buy from Sudbury who buy from M W R A. So there's many ways to, to approach that. All of that needs to be explored in the feasibility. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. So yes, we're hoping to have the feasibility study within a year. Um, we're hoping to be able to pay for that, we're maneuvering your operating. And if we have to make an adjustment, I would potentially look at our reserve fund versus a debt for something like that.
I have a question, Justin. Um, given that, uh, this requires the, you know, the local communities to collaborate, uh, what's your sense of the current state of the, you know, the capacity of these communities to actually communicate well with each other? Collaborate on, on this project? And are there any barriers that we need to consider at this point that might prevent uh, the communities from actually working well together to this end?
So Mike, yeah, so there is, there is three main drivers. I would actually say Maynard, uh, Concord and, um, Acton. Acton's water district has seen a changeover in its leadership that is not entertaining in the same way that their previous leadership was. Um. We've got to a point where I know I can't speak for Concord, Justin can probably speak better, but I believe Alan has a M W R A committee doing the feasibility study or exploration that we're talking about as well. Um, in regards to communication, I think we have a, a good rapport with Sudbury. I think both from a T A perspective down to, uh, the water district, the difference with Sudbury, they're very similar to Acton, unlike, unlike Maynard and Concord. Sudbury is a water district that does not report to general government. So Acton has the same thing. Concord and Maynard are very similar. We have D P W directors that run water and sewer operations and we work under general government. I'm not sure it's the local government that's in the way yet, it's the diligence factor that needs to happen. If I came to this board today and said, hey, I want to sign an M W R A and that information I just gave Jeff was good enough, he would laugh with me. He would say, no, that's not good enough, we can't sell a town meeting vote with that. It, I know Maynard better than Alan knows Maynard. Alan knows Concord better than I know Concord. We're tiptoeing through this process at the beginning because we need to fight on to something. I am aware that this community will be in a critical debt of feasibility study that weighs all the options, the benefits of Maynard, the benefits giving, the benefits for Maynard versus the alternatives of our situation. With that document, I do believe that we can push the other communities. I do believe Alan thinks the same way, who's the D P W director in Concord. I believe that we're at a point where we're continually pushing the other directors and the other superintendents who are nervous to pull the trigger with their force. Um, we're not at a point yet where the boards one hundred percent need to, um, communicate. But when there is a time when we have a cost sharing M O U in front of you, I absolutely believe there will be a point where all the chairs need to sit at the table. Uh, it may be an open meeting of all of the communities. We're not there yet. Neither is the North Shore or the South Shore. My belief is that the M A P C should be the leader on this. And I am pushing heavily for M A P C to be the leader on this. In the South Shore, M A P C is leading this job. So I don't know why they can't lead it for us. So we have reached out to them and we have put, and if we get nowhere with them, we will start to use our alternative. We have a champion in Kate Holton. And she has been pushing multiple levers in regards to this to make sure that we're constant communication and consideration. All three of her communities are dire need of work. So Hudson, she is one that we will help continue to move this forward. And we are awaiting M A P C's response to their approach to the South Shore and making sure that their programmatic approach to the South Shore can be considered in the Metro West.
She also represented Holden, which she would be very disappointed if you didn't mention that.
Uh, yeah, that is true, yeah. Yeah, that is true. I, Holden's not in the same P V S manner as the other three communities, they don't want to P V S here, if I do remember correctly.
Is there a non-Sudbury route that includes Stowe and Hudson?
So my assumption is yes. So let's assume, and we have to make a lot of assumptions. Maynard goes through the pre-application. We get a town meeting vote and we go to, we get to M W R A and say we're serious. That's the serious skin of the game. There's multiple ways to find it. They could backdoor through Hudson Stowe. Stowe doesn't have a distribution system, but they're actually talking about a pipeline at one seventeen, one seventeen only. It still does have issues with their, uh, economic development and P V S. Hudson has an, has an entire distribution system and an interconnection in model, which I'm well aware of because it's an interconnection I used to maintain. So M W R A's treatment plant is a model. That interconnection is an emergency connector, but could be expanded. These are things that weren't explored because again, the feasibility study from M W R A was hyper focused on one. But if we start to open those doors, that's where we, you'll see me potentially push the board and with the feasibility study, if it really weeds out that Sudbury's a no, and Acton's a no, and Lincoln's a no, we're going to take it upon ourselves to look at alternative answers. And we're going to try to push M W R A to look at. You'd be surprised how successful Alan. But he can also get it from relative. So to David's point, there is actually multiple paths. So if it comes from a different direction, there is a, there could be an interconnection with Concord right at our board. So we're, um, back to the rates.
Yeah, that was a good conversation, thank you.
No, that, that covers, that covers the water resource future planning, it's called, as I said below. But, so we got to go back to the rates because that's the, the hearing piece. What, I'm looking at your, it says here, um, appendix or exhibit, exhibit one and one A. Where, where is, where is one and one A? I don't see one and one A. Or is that what you're calling the information in that note, that note?
So the rate is getting, so that they, they're the one which is the water.
All right, all right.
They're the one A is the sewer.
All right, and that's consolidated into a one pager, which you're calling, um, template letter?
It's the mental public order is one rate.
Yeah, well, same type of mic.
Oh, for, I know many of them, though.
Yeah, so it, it been a. It's the one.
Correct, it's the, it's like the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's mostly the tested letter, almost?
Uh, it's like. It's the standard format that Dave designed now, that we all listen to. Oh, well, that just shows, that actually assumes the rates that they may or may not do. So let me. Do you want me to carry a memo on page three?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that was in the, that was in the PowerPoint.
It's in both, so he, he's looking for it in the memo, it's, it's on page six of seven in the memo, no, not this one. I, yeah, sorry. So, um, it's on page six of the memo and says that one, that it did the one A.
Right.
Which is the, which is carried in the PowerPoint. Yeah. There, there.
That one.
Right there.
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, and that's the rate structure that we're recommending.
Okay, yeah, we got it, we can.
So scenario, in the PowerPoint, we described it as scenario one, one A. And the only reason I described it as scenario on the PowerPoint is because if you were promoting those scenarios for a conversation or consideration. All right. But our recommendation is exhibit one and two. Okay. So really would like to make a motion on the rate structure. And we need to, we'll go back and have more conversation.
I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer utility use rates for fiscal year twenty twenty five, FY twenty five, as listed in exhibit one, water and exhibit one A sewer in the public works director memo, the select board dated February twenty seven, twenty twenty four, effective July first, twenty twenty four, and authorizing the use of digital signatures get approved. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so now do we have any further conversation in regards to items one, exhibit one and exhibit one A before we get to a vote?
Well, there it's a public hearing, so we need to.
Yeah, we'll get to that, we'll get to, well, check that first, then I will. If there's anyone in the public, the, so the only one that could make a public hearing would be Chris Osborn, it's the only one in the room.
Are you asking me to make a bubble comment?
I'm asking if you'd like to make a, I'm asking if you have any questions regarding the public hearing. Because according to the governor's advice, public hearing, um, questions can only be taken, taken in this room. They cannot be done remotely.
Or if my bubble comment is, I exploit the rate.
Okay, thank you. Um, so is there anyone online that has any questions or comments, um, in regards to this? Okay. Um, any board members want to further come, have any further conversation about exhibit one and one A? All right, so we will now, um, vote on the, um, motion, order of jury. All those in favor of the motion, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Um, I will now, I will make a motion to close the public hearing at eight oh eight P M.
Second.
All those in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. The hearing is now closed. Um, so we had a little bit of a discussion in the middle of that hearing in regards to, um, some of the future planning stuff. Is there anything that we didn't cover in that conversation that you'd like to add under, um, item B of this? Yeah, agenda item. Yeah, I just want to highlight some of the, some of the conversation in regards to our forecasting models and future data. So as we transitioned from phase one, which is for a treatment plant and transition into Rockland, we have received some grant funding, which is in the air mark, again, Kate Hogan, four hundred thousand dollars, which allows us that well exploration and pilot improvement. I always caution that that is the timeliest factor. Just remember the permitting for four A is seven years. I understand there was a D P W director change at that time, and also please be aware that four A also had environmental impacts to the day construction, which is why part of that was seven years. If we are able to financially continue a permitting and piloting process without a financial issue, we should be able to expedite that in progress, which is our goal. That's why Rockland is always in phase two, because there is a cost there. We are looking to utilize the four hundred thousand dollars for this year, this fiscal year coming up, FY twenty five, which should get us to the first year of that pilot and permitting. Please also be aware as the board is, um, consistently informed, we are in a P V S litigation. There should be significant funds coming to support the water, uh, utility. Those funds do not come with spending limits, can be used for anything in the water. It is not specific for that chemical. So we will make a decision when that time comes, but our projected goal is to move our capacity forward. The amount of funds we will be awarded will absolutely not mitigate that chemical. We need to have capacity before we consistently think about treatment, so understand that may be an issue as well. But be aware that we did bake in design contingencies within four, four A, the treatment plant to allow for future P V S mitigation removal treatment. So we have designed the piping system already, the plants, et cetera. We would have to deliver building and treat, treatment plant. Just treatment plant specific for that chemical pot and entire treatment plant. So as we move forward with Rockland and as the statutes change, we will design Rockland in a similar manner. One of the other advantageous approaches to Rockland is it's significantly low in P V S chemicals. So the con of the bedrock well is a pro of the P V S. So with that being said, it's also a target. Old Marlboro Road is our biggest P V S issue. So we're trying to target capacity and treatability in an efficient and effective way. Um, Rockland app gets us comfortability in the community. And allows us to have real conversations of future growth within your potential lifetime. Old Marlboro Road allows us to become more. Just kind of think of the difference. So I'm not saying this community wants to be walked in, but I'm not gonna lie. I also feel like the last tribal meeting, it did want to be walked in. So I, I, I always encourage, wait till you see your first building start to pop up and then let's have the stakeholder conversation after that. Once one fifteen's. Done being built in one of the taller buildings downtown, you start to see how is the stakeholders handling that, that they continue, we want that kind of development. But for us, we actually have to look at those understandings. We also know there is a huge housing push from the governor. That's not gonna stop. They're gonna continually push policy and we're gonna be forced into it. We want to be ahead of it. Rockland phase two allows us to do that. And we'll continue to express interest and move forward with hope, phase three, Old Marlboro Road and twelve four. Because within our permanent and piloting, we're also going to test our brand new one little move. So the four hundred thousand dollars.
Um, recognizing that part of this is just we approved the new compliance coordinator, uh, for that, uh, where do we stand in terms of our communication to D P in regards to the compliance conversation that we had in the years?
You've got it. So I, if you remember, I brought up the sanitary survey for a reason. So we're ripe for renewal. And so they're coming five to seven year blocks. D P has a huge retirement changeover. So I have a feeling like we're gonna. The sanitary survey isn't gonna happen this year. It may happen next year. Um, but in, in regards to compliance, we're in full compliance. The only issue is that we had one lead exceedance, but that's not a non-compliance. It's a non-compliance, but that's that face. Um, right now, we're in compliance with P F S. E P's limits, we are meeting. We're not meeting projected limits, but we can't plan for projections until they become actual. We can. Conceptually, schematically planned, but projected being federal, beyond federal, E P A levels. Yep. But as of right now, we're meeting him. The issues that we have with some of our water quality, specifically Justine and David's neighborhood. Is, that is discoloration. That's not a violation, but it's unsightly. It would be the first inside. I have a, I have a golden ticket down there that lets me know the second it hits groundwater, one of the first houses it hits. Text me immediately and we stop the treatment, which is why we're able to reduce that load. And that poor person is the one who sees it all the time, but she is still teammate her. She's still, he is still teammate her. Yeah. Oh, okay. Alright, um, but in regards to that, that's a general treatment.
You stop it.
Yeah, so stop it. We, we do what we can, but we, we have that luxury now because of four A. So as we start to build in well redundancy. We can actually shift our operations or reduce the strain on our operations, and that's the movement we're getting there. It's very hard for the board. I know you see it or are educated at a far. Bigger rate than our citizens or our residents, but we're seeing that basically on our complaint volume going down. Or some of the issues that we typically see. But to your point, Jeff, the outreach, um, the. The coordinator would also help us with our educational outreach process. So as you know, we've been, uh, the past three years, we've been at Maynard Fest. We consistently are pumping out more and more information within our utility. I want to ramp that up. It's been successful. The problem is the resources we have put towards. That's a proactive approach versus sad that we're still in extreme reactive approach. For that two steps forward, one step back. If we can consistently pump out education, one, we're, we're in extreme compliance. That's ultimately what they want. Um, buy-in is ultimately what we want, because at the end of the day, as we go through these hearings, we're starting to see success. I remember four years ago that this hearing would have been maybe three meetings. So I am proud that the board is highly educated. If there's questions, you know where to find me. I don't die away from it. We are working diligently with Bob McCarthy and his team on some public outreach. Again, Bob's taking the lead on that, and I'm highly appreciative about it. I give them information and we're gonna hopefully do that on a quarterly basis. I'm hoping that our compliance coordinator can do that on a more regular basis. So monthly updates, a faster website, faster Facebook posts. We still see significant issues with flushing in the sewer system that's illegal. There's a number of things that we are looking that will help reduce the overall operation maintenance. Such as the auditing system and that.
What is Bob's team?
It's, there's like three or four of them. So it's Bob McCarthy, Jack and Ian, and I just, I forget, I just met the other.
I was asking about the Maynard advantage.
Yes, it was like a, it's like a branch of the E D C trying to do marketing, and then so it's like they're marketing. But they're also.
Their marketing is wing, is doing the water sewer stuff?
They're doing updates. They're kind of like, they're kind of like trying to figure out what they're doing.
Yeah, they're just kind of trying to figure out where they're, where they're attached.
Well, I mean, there's no newspaper, so they're trying to fill again.
Alright, no, I'm, I'm fine with that. I was just trying to figure out, because you said, you mentioned it a couple of times. I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
I didn't know that Bob was officially on the group committee, but I, I'm okay with what you're telling us.
I think they're doing a combo. So the great point, they're absolutely looking at promoting Maynard, but at the same time, they're looking to educate part.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah, you know, I get it now. I just, I just wasn't sure where he was.
Yeah, we no longer have a newspaper, so it's hard, you know?
Yeah.
Before, all the committee would come in quarterly, they could have a conversation with their, they would hit. But now that's not there. That's not a launch. And our website and Facebook only hits a certain target audience and then it gets stuck. So. Uh, but yes, that's our goal. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for educating us, and thanks for the hearing.
Excellent.
Um, are you gonna handle discussing if anyone needs to discuss the hazard mitigation excepting plan? More plan excepting.
Nothing different from the last presentation that we had, right? It's just now.
No, so I can speak to it for two seconds. We did incorporate some of the comments. Um, but we're at the point where we have to submit it to M I M A and F I M A. And they provide comments and then it's a peer review back and forth. But technically, all the board has to do is endorse it so that we can move it forward. There's no motion.
I will move to approve the hazard mitigation plan as presented.
Okay, you do it technically. It's like, it's definitely, okay, so. No, I didn't. So, so essentially, what we're looking at. And what we're approving is what we saw last week.
Yeah, yes, but, and again, it wasn't attached last week. I think it was like two meetings ago, we had the rapper's attached.
You hear the presentation.
It was, it was close enough to final of two meetings ago that I'm okay, but we had access to it.
That's the same. So just get process firm. It's, yeah, F I M A and M I M A can change, which is why you haven't. Fully accepted in, in a motion of like a local authority motion. You're just allowing us to move with the P F S.
Well, I wanted to, I put a motion. Justin didn't ask me to. I put a motion in because they want to make it clear that the board wasn't endorsing it. He moved forward.
Yeah.
So maybe we could admit how I moved this motion, but.
I'm, I'm fine. I understand when there's a motion.
Yeah, yeah, you're endorsing the submission.
Right. Okay, I just still would like to see the plan attached in future time, but I might do that. Go over it.
Great.
Alright.
Alright, any other questions about, about the motion that we made in secondary?
Did we move, did we move something?
Well.
The, the, the motion was moved to prove the hazard mitigation plan as presented. We might definitely. Any further conversation? All those in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that's. Water items. Not that hazard mitigation is just water, but. You get it. Alright, now we're, now we're on to item eight on our agenda, which is a planning board item. And we have the chair of the planning board here and Mr. Nemser online as well. Alright.
Your person name, Bill. Bill with us too. Bill states.
Oh.
Um, for the record, Chris Archnall's chair of planning board. Is Bill Nemser.
Bill Nemser, planning director. Justin, why are you in my seat?
It's my feet now, Bill. I'm just gonna have another app.
Alright, so, um, who wants to tell us what we're looking at and then we'll get into what we're looking at?
Well, I'll be happy to start. Um, a lot of you have probably heard now about, uh. The M B T A communities legislation, and the purpose of this is to. Ensure that, um, the purpose of our proposed article is to ensure that we're in compliance with, um. The, uh, new law for M B T A communities, which is, uh, uh, chapter three eight. And. In Maynard's case, it, it's odd because we have a commuter shuttle. And we're essentially being categorized as an M B T A community. Nonetheless, that's the way it is. Uh, our, um, minimum. Requirements are, uh, established by the state, which are twenty one, uh. We are required to have zoning for twenty one units per acre. For a, uh, I'm sorry, fifteen units per acre. Twenty one acres total, and that's our requirement. Uh, that we have to have zoned for by right zoning. And what by right zoning means essentially is that there's no discretionary permitting involved. Uh. The planning board has been working on this with the. Powdermill corridor and the idea that eventually, as the powdermill corridor, um, were matured. We would find a location that best suits, uh, Maynard's needs. And, uh, would satisfy the requirement, and that is, uh, been determined to be. Uh, the former, um, Stratus property, which is now owned by the Beijing Royal School. Um, and. They have, uh, we've been in touch with leadership, uh, and ownership for quite a while. They're amiable to this. And I believe that, um, the planning board has. Tried their best. Uh, to meet all the needs without excessively straining the town any more than is required by law. And so this property, we're proposing, uh, a referral to the planning board for Warren article. Um, designating the properties that are in your memorandum, uh, for M B T A, uh. Community designation. Um, the question a lot of people may be asking is, what if we don't comply? And. In the news, you can see exactly, uh, that other people are asking the same question. Um, we risk losing and jeopardizing our grants, uh, from the state, and that would even include. Um. Really mass works, uh, uh, housing choice, and potentially some of, um. The other grants that we enjoy from the, uh, state and which we depend on. Also, uh, my biggest concern. Would be that we are subject to legal action from the state, which would require. You know, uh, uh, employment of defense, et cetera, et cetera. And, um. So in this case, I think it's a very practical proposal. Um, it meets our. Minimums. It allows us a little flexibility. Uh, and, um. Really, it's, I've, I never, in my career, I've never been in a situation like this where a, um. Governing body, in this case, you know, we're governed by the Commonwealth, has been, uh, so adamant about. Establishing an environment for creation of housing. And, um. Interestingly, Maynard has always responded. Probably the best, or at the top of any community for affordable requirements. Um, and people would naturally ask, well, you know, what are we getting for affordable requirements in this legislation? And the answer is, uh, the law caps affordable requirements. At, um, ten percent. At, um, eighty percent of the average median income. And we thought, well, that's, that's not reflective of this committee. And, um. We have requested an exemption to allow. Um. Extra. Consideration and allowance for what our, uh, requirements for affordable units will be. Uh, that's yet to be determined, and that's the reason you'll see I put in the, um. Draft legislation. You know, there's a, there's a, we, we left wiggle room for that. But our goal is to provide housing that meets the need of our resident, needs of our residents now and in the future. And meets, uh, the state's requirements for M B T A communities. Uh, the last thing I'd say is that we. Peeled this off from the rest of the Powdermill, uh, corridor districts, which. Our Powdermill study's been going on for really three years now. The reason we did that is because we didn't want. Any. Considerations from other districts to influence this particular legislation, which we view as critical. You heard Justin talking, you know, about the upcoming needs in the future. And, um. This is a way we can lay a foundation for the future. The last thing I'd say is that while we are required to zone. Um. Properties, you know, at this density. It's not the town's obligation to build. And I don't mean that in a flippant way. We're saying like, well, we'll trick somebody or whatever the case is. The point is, if we don't have the water. We can't issue the permits. And, and I think. You know, in the end. We are going to represent a problem that Commonwealth may be faced with. And, um, so this is a serious issue. It's a serious piece of legislation. And, um, we've really worked as hard as we can on it to try to bring something that's. Good for everybody. And I understand there's going to be some.
I, Bill, thank you for your comments on this. Um, I wanted to comment that, um. Relative to many times when, uh, Warren articles opposed and, and entities. Make, you know, allegations of, or they, they present it in a way that, oh, if we don't do this, this could happen. In this particular situation, um, I think it was the town or the city of, of, uh, Milton. That voted against moving forward in a fashion that would. Allow for their community to build in the way that the state is mandating it to do so, and it was voted down. And the state didn't just sit back and say, oh, we don't want to approach it. They've actually, there's litigation now. And, uh, Milton has clearly been told that they are not qualified, as you said, for mass works grants. Which, as we've seen over the last three years, have been hugely, uh, beneficial to us. Uh, on a couple of projects. So, um, I think. You know, at, well, whether or not we like it or not, and whether or not we think it's a good idea or not. It makes perfect sense, and if we don't do it, we could be in deep trouble as far as trying to keep up with our master plan and with our whole. You know, our whole vision for the future. So I think it's critically important.
I just have a question about, um, Billy, you mentioned that, um, you know. And, and I understand what you're trying, I, I think I understand what you're trying to convey, but as far as. As far as if we don't have the water capacity, we can't issue a permit to build. Um, but you also noted in this that it's, um, you want. So we're, we must provide a zone district with land area sufficient to create four have, four hundred and seventy four units by right. So. If it's by right, don't they, they. Do we have, do we have any say at that point? Because I feel like we ran into this when we were trying to develop or when. The act and, uh, act of Maynard development was gonna go in, and it was basically, it didn't matter that we didn't have the capacity to do it.
No, you're right. You're, that's a hundred percent right, Justine. Um, it's clear. That. Uh. The Commonwealth recognizes there are capacity limitations. Uh, for water, sewer and other communities, it may be different, but, but in general, I think. uh for water sewer and other communities. It may be different, but but in general, I think that that's that's the case. When you create zoning and you have a zoning map and zoning designations like we have. It's strictly talking about what can go where. It's not saying this is going to be created there. It it is saying this is what zoning would allow here. Now, we could, right, without MBTA communities, i- it's entirely possible. We could propose a subdivision and DPW you know, would say, well, we probably don't have capacity to handle it. But zoning, or in this case, the planning board controlling the zoning, would say, well, that may be, but that's not our purview. We need to decide if this zoning wise is appropriate for this location. And then the approval from the planning board, or in some cases zoning board, would be on the record and then they would move the application along and perhaps DPW would say, yes, it's great, which, believe me, Justin and I he's in my office and I'm in his office every other day about this. Um, but in the end, if DPW doesn't think there's sufficient utilities, no, it can't go. But it's not saying that it's not, it can't go because of the zoning. Or because that's what the legislation means. It's saying that, no, there's not adequate utilities for whatever reason. And it's, it's, this is it it's very difficult. It is the result of you know, I'm hesitant to say, but but lack of planning, you know, for uh infrastructure to handle the growth for an economy that is the way that uh ours is, which is
In the other room, we hear you, lack of planning at the Commonwealth scale, not at Maynard's scale.
Beg your pardon?
You meant lack of planning at the Commonwealth scale, not at Maynard's scale when you said that, correct?
I believe that's what I said was Commonwealth, that's what I meant, yes.
Oh, we, we just want to make sure you weren't throwing yourself under the bus.
Yes. It's the ties.
All right, so, can I add a little color to this?
Sure.
Not just, I know this board has awareness of it, but just for, just for the, for the public, if you're in the views, um, the 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 compliance point here is section three of chapter forty A. This is, this is law, this is not regulation being promulgated through one of the agencies. This was a law that was passed by state. We are required to comply with. And so the focus of Bill and the whole team has been, what is our compliance point and then meet our objectives towards that compliance point. So, but at the same time, Bill and team has done a really great job at finding a way to make synergy with this. And that's why I listed as the second section, the second section of this, of this slide, ancillary benefits. I do see this, and this is, these are my words at this point, but I do see this as reporting and lining of powder mill quarter initiative. The point of that powder mill quarter initiative is to provide more density and to create economic revitalization. It also, this also helps us meet some of our other goals, um housing planning goals by providing a different variety of housing options. Um, we're not the only town that's had to do this. There's a hundred and seventy-seven community that also needs to comply with this. And each community has their own sort of compliance point, but we have ours and we're going to pull them out. And so you can see here, here is the range of the compliance for MBTA communities. Here are all the towns that are in color that need to comply. Ours is in that, is in that ugly green color. Um, on the right figure, right edge, you can see it circled. Uh, but you can see this, the range of communities. So, Bill already laid this out. I won't spend much time on this. We do have to comply though by the end of the year. That's the important part. And the reason why Bill and I thought it would be good to bring this to town meeting in the spring is just to ensure that there's no gap. And for a hiccup, for example, could be potentially maybe the district attorney says there's something that's not quite right and takes it back to us. We would want another chance at a potential fall town meeting to get this right before we do the, or the compliance point, it's still important. But I would not want to risk it with one final time.
What, what actually signifies compliance?
They, and Bill can answer this better, but I believe it's simply passage of the zoning that will then get stamped by the district attorney.
Well, so that goes back to passing, passage of the zoning, it goes back to include the um the numbers that you cited, the twenty-one, fifteen, four seventy-four.
And it would be the passage of the, the Warren article that we're looking for, right, Chris?
Okay, that's correct. It would be approval by the um the Attorney General's Office. Uh, I
So does compliance mean we have to be approved by December thirty-first or does it mean we have to submit by December thirty-first?
No, 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 approved.
So, Bill, what does approval mean specifically? Does that mean approval by the DA's office or approval at town meeting?
Approval by the AG's office.
To the AG's office.
So, this is a, that's a usual practice, like we'll send it to the AG's office, any bylaw.
Right. So the question, the question then become how long is that process? When do we have to have it to the AG's office before it's can, you know, for their consideration?
Bill, it's have this conversation. Bill, you want to just walk, make sure to come to the board that the schedule of that agreement?
The, well, the AG's office has already seen this, to be honest with you, and I, I just got the results back um yesterday. But um, I mean, in general, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to do. Um, but we do we're required by the legislation to have everything by the beginning of next year. And um, I think we are really, we've got it, I think. I um, so it would have to be passed by a town meeting and then approved by the AG. The AG approval take, takes about, I don't know, forty-five days, maybe, tops. Um, everybody, everybody, everybody in the regional planning community that I that I deal with and that will end up in the approval process is aware of what we're doing. Nothing is um going to hit anybody out of left field. It's possible there may be tweaks. Um, the, but the kind of uh tweaks that we made would not be of um, what I would consider significant.
If, if we, if we didn't have, if we weren't lucky enough to have been able to identify one plot of land that meets the qualifications, would we have been obligated to find various little spots all over town that would allow us to reach this? How, how would we have complied?
Bill, I think it's contiguous, right?
Well, that's a great question on, by both of you. Um, fifty percent of it has to be contiguous. So we could have theoretically, you know, if we had a couple of um you know, eleven acre parcels or something, we could, we maybe could have done it. The question is, David, that, you know, what type of zoning would it be be allowing onto those particular parcels that's not there now? You know?
So, and speaking to that, this isn't, but am I mistaken in saying this is a change from what we had looked at where that was more of a commercial and now we're suggesting using the same lot of land for the MBTA communities?
Well, what we're doing, yeah, what we're doing, Jeff.
Uh, not from the current usage, but from what I believe had been presented recently for the powder mill corridor initiative.
Oh, that's pot, those, that's possible.
New box on the slide you got up right now.
This does not preclude, correct me if I'm wrong, if Beijing School wanted to come in and do their planned project. Uh, this in no way precludes them from doing that, correct?
No.
And we're still in compliance.
No, the, the, the difference is, the difference is zoning appropriate appropriate acreage for the, this type of use. Not building it. So, we thought originally we could, we could um use our downtown overlay district. And we could use the uh healthcare industrial district, which is the mill. We thought that was a cool way to get the mill redeveloped. And um, you know, use the downtown overlay district for the stuff that we've already done. I mean, we've done quite a lot, you know, there. Um, the reason for each of them not qualifying, um, when you dig down on legislation, you find it, but in a nutshell, um, it's gotta be by right zoning, where it's not discretionary. It's simply the planning board deciding if it meets your zoning or it doesn't meet your zoning. It can't be a question of, well, you know, um you know, this board thinks this way, this board thinks that way. And of course, all of you could understand how that could hold things up. But I thought also that, well, let's try the downtown overlay district. In the end, what bit us was we only allowed six units by right. And after that, you had to go for a special permit and boom, we're out. Well, I didn't wanna, I didn't want to fool around with this, the um downtown overlay district, which now has been pretty successful for us. So that's why I felt that we had to move in this direction.
Yeah, so, so, I'm sorry, but Bill, the question was, can the and you had a question too, Jeff, but I don't want to get through, but David's question was whether the Beijing Royal School could, could current, could still implement their plan that has been in the past, their previous plans for the property. Could they still do that?
Well, it would depend i- if you mean by right or by special permit. By right, um probably not.
But by special permit?
Probably.
So, the answer to his question is yes, if I'm following them. And then, like, more like, similar vein, if somebody could do large commercial properties or large commercial um use like we have in the initial powder mill quarter initiative, they could also do that by special permit.
That's right. Well, we, we have to remember with the, with these zonings that were are the, the, they're overlay zoning districts. So the underlying district retains rights that they have.
So, but if Beijing School did decide, this is all speculation. They did decide they were gonna build what they had originally planned in the past.
Right.
They did that, they got the special permit that was necessary and they built it. We then not fall out of compliance because we don't have proper land. We already have it zoned that way because it meets compliance, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and that's better goal from the start is simply focus on our compliance.
Right.
So you can see here, if you're referencing this property, um, now the, the orange outlaw outlined is the, is would be the MBTA community building district, the overlay district. Or the districts, the sub-district of the powder mill corridor overlay district. This is one sub-district out of, I think, three potential sub-districts that we're considering for the, for powder mill corridor initiative.
So, the, one perfection, um, regarding, so on the memo, it says the ownership of the proposed Beijing Royal School has expressed interest in obtaining the MBTA's uh designation for the property. Why? Like, what's in it for them?
There, that's a good question. So, they, they haven't, they haven't committed to anything, but they've had discussions with, with us, with staff, indicating that their, their plans may not come to fruition as they originally expected of Beijing Royal School. Again, it's the thought that they grew, the development, um. We actually are planning on meeting with them next week. But either way, in the near future, to continue this discussion with them as to what's, what else are they gonna do with the property? And so then when we said, well, guess what, we, we might, this, our, our two goals may align. You're looking to do something else with your property than you originally planned and, and we are allowing for potential alternative uses to, to that bridge. We don't need, we don't, they have not, nothing is proposed otherwise. They're just saying, we're not sure if we're gonna go down to that.
But there's no reason we couldn't rezone without their involvement. Is that correct?
We, you mean, you do not need their permission?
Yeah, no, that's not entirely correct. We can rezone without their consent, particularly as an overlay district like this. The reason that they, the reason that they were happy to go along with us is it provides flexibility.
Tops the market value of the property. Um, but in my general engagement in town, um, just on my principles, I would not want to create zone with fair stakeholder engagement.
Fair.
Um, but yes, we, yeah, they were excited about this.
Even though we were just talking about possibility of water capacity issues.
They wanted them, that.
So, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, that's, that's why I was just gonna stay around and I need to put Justin on the spot, but do you have a sense of what current capacity that's built into the model for that, that property?
So, so technically, the last capacity model that we actually incorporated their institution, their original their original plans that had less unit capacity than their recent we couldn't handle the water then, most likely can't handle it in the future. But to Justin's point and to Chris, this those not, this stands to back up. My personal thought on this, I would carry a crease and I can't believe the state is acting in this manner, but it doesn't shock me because that's what happens in the water statute section with federal government state environment. Pulsing press is becoming more continual, et cetera. So, with that being said, it removes a hurdle with zoning. But our local regulations for water and sewer protect that. It just puts it bottom my shoulder. So, I'm now the gate that stops it. So, as our rules and regulations pertain to them, if this was an external ask, meaning act in bill of forty B right next to us and wanted our water, you would I am happy to be the door because sometimes I'm a very nice person. So, the issue is, you are removing her. Do we need to? Obviously, there is a statute or a law requirement pushing that. I know that Bill worked with Lisa Mee quite confident on this approach and we have been pushed back that this is something that we have to be compliant with. There is no technical point. To Bill's point, from day one, my request to Lisa and her team was, do we have to guarantee utility? And that is not going to be the point. So like anything, I go back, I know that you grew up in Berlin, I worked in Marlboro, there was a forty B run on the corner. So, typical of what Chris talked about is act inputs their forty Bs all on the course. So doesn't everybody else that doesn't mind development within their boards? Berlin was stuck with forty B issue. If you are all unfamiliar with Berlin, they do not have a policy activity. They don't have waters. Marlboro, we said absolutely not. So Berlin still went through their forty B and that forty B developer was forced into putting their own waste water treatment facility in, in their own water treatment facility to support their development. That has been explained to the Bozen group and any other developer that has come in with a situation that is beyond our capacity. Now, does that benefit the town in the long run? Absolutely not. Remember the customer conversation? We do eventually want customers, but there's still a mechanism of defense that makes sense. Um, I know that Bill is very sensitive to this and we are he's inviting me to every single free application meeting of any developer that comes through the door. And I am pretty blunt and honest. And that is, number one, give me your water uh capacity counts right away. Even if you can't stamp it, give me a rough understanding, we'll run a rough model and see if it works or, or. Um, as of right now, neither of those know. Maybe with Rockland they do. That's why I brought it up in the conversation. So, I think this is a chicken and the egg situation that we're consistently dealing with at Maynard, but we have been for a very long time. Um, we're start, trying to stay ahead of that game. This is to my point of the infill projects. If you notice, I work, I do work at the planning board on a lot of the infill projects as they started with this budget from a like one fifteen, two, four, six pound mill. We can handle that sustaining role. It always makes me nervous with the four hundred, five hundred, six hundred, specifically because the governor is putting that.
With no funding.
Of course, so this goes back to the general point with N W R A. Where do you think my first thought process is? We can absolutely support the state's health and process. Solve our water tasking problem in the metro area. You have our resolution. You're not willing to invest. So I think part of this conversation needs to lead in some of those So I think part of this conversation needs to lead in some of those other conversations. And they have to kind of circle back and some applied pressures to go back on to our leadership body. About the pressures they're providing locales. So it's all connected. Yeah, absolutely. It's all connected. And just very quickly, I put sort of the public's awareness, if you could just switch slides. And I, this is just a request and referral, but I'll spend all the time you guys want, but I don't need to spend too much more time on this. These are the, these are summary of the failure compliance points, and. There is definitely synergy, and there's definitely a lot of support for this type of project or this type of zoning. For the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative in the whole, there's sticks to them. We will lose, and I believe this in its entirety from the governor and the attorney general, we will lose funding programs. There is definitely threat of so enforcement, and there has been a recent case that David mentioned about Milton. Uh, Milton was filed, certainly was filed against Milton by the attorney general on February twenty seven. So, and that was just weeks after their town uh denied um passage of the compliance. Um, the governor has also made very uh strict comments on this about. The loss of school funding and the lots of road and bridges funding and other sort of funding streams that are, that are from what I might read of it. That's separate than the grant funding itself.
So with this initiative, with this, these laws, and I know the answer to this, but I'm just getting it out there. And with the governor and whoever passed the law, that this is what we need to do. Zero money came with it. There's no increase, no large increase in. It, there's no large increase in school funding or any other type of thing to help. The towns that are now gonna have to deal with this many possible people coming into development.
They would probably argue that it's not a direct funding source. They would argue that if this, if this was to be allowed, yes, I mean, let's say water is. Let's say we had the water and some of the certain elements came in, and therefore increasing our. Therefore making this a certain eligibility in, increase towards an, an S P A or other sort of like programming. They would say that, that, that yes, they are providing funding, but it's not a one for one. It's not saying if you implement this, you get funding. But they, but it is a climate policy, and that they say if you don't do this, then you're not gonna get that. It, it's a, it's, it's from a political standpoint, and it's, it's, I, I give it a lot of credit for that.
It's blackmail, to be honest.
It's, well, how do you see it as law? Uh, so they see it as a matter of scale. If, if nothing happens in Maynard, okay, so even, even if we rezone um the, the, what's owned by the BaZang Group. And it, and nothing happens, I don't, but at least we were in compliance, and so we can check the box. They're okay with that. We're only one of even fifty eight adjacent towns. Of the one hundred seventy seven towns that have to be compliant. The odds are still pretty good that this policy is gonna result in more affordable housing across the Commonwealth. So they're, so they see it as like, yeah, I made it up to come, come there. But they have to enforce it, or else no one does, and that means they don't get any more affordable housing, and then the state fails. So it's a, it's, I, I, this, again, this isn't Governor Newley, this is starting with Governor Baker's administration. So it's, it's actually, like, we've been talking about this as a combo for a very long time. I, I was surprised at certain towns like Bill, like. They, uh, they, they looked him in the eye, and they, and, and this was happening, like, this.
But they didn't lose a ton of funding yet, you know. Grants was not, was not allowed.
But it's only been three weeks since Mil- Milton's town vote, and it's only been a week since the civil suit was filed. I, I don't. Know any information about the government.
Yeah.
I will, but I will put a sort of different angle on this, and I agree with you. Um, but if I look at it from our point of view. Reputation of Maynard to me is a huge priority, and I want to be known as a town that has done a very good job with portable housing. With revitalization and with compliance, so I wanted to know that Maynard is doing good work. And so that's been my.
I, I absolutely, and I, I agree with you, and I agree that, that I think that everyone worked extremely hard to achieve those goals. Um, I think what you're hearing from me is just the frustration of an incredibly tight budget. All of the time, incredibly tight resources all of the time, and then the possibility of. Feeling like you're forced into something that's going to cause more hardship. For more residents. So that, that's my, that was my.
I completely agree. And I think we kind of, we in a way have lucked out. They see a lot of other communities that are. Probably gonna struggle with this way more than we are. We already had an initiative where we could piggyback on this and make some synergy. That, that's a huge. There's some communities that are just gonna have to carve out a residential district and add it, and add a zoning district. That's gonna be challenging for the communities to handle conceptually and in practice. So. I think we're in a good spot overall. And, and I can add, you know, part of the overall planning and the approach in this location. This location, take water capacity. This location is ripe for sewer pipe capacity, water distribution pipe capacity. So we're not talking about distribution issues, we're not talking about sewage collection issues. We do have out of a pump station, which has. Its own issues because we took our main crossing and is now a vital pinch point. But we have been lucky to receive a housing choice grant which allowed for schematic design. We'll continue to approach that project. From a potential Mass Works grant, if we had to piggyback off a project to solve that sewer issue. Piping is fine, election system is fine. No matter what, Mass Works isn't saving our water capacity problem because it's a permitting issue. That's the one that we, like. Two years ago, I said, Maynard, we gotta put this on our back. This, there's no one saving us. We've been lucky with Kate, four hundred here, our bottom left fields, and another couple hundred over here. That's kind of inching us along. The litigation can again help move that along. We've been kind of lucky where we've subsided some of that. But ultimately, at the end of the day, if we can get to phase two, we can handle this in the corridor. Can we handle the mill in Maine completely transforming after that? Can we handle the corridor in that aspect with Rockland? Potential. Is a developer gonna beat us today? If they started today, if you started today, yes, they're gonna beat us today. But again, this is what annual town meeting, where we start to see implementation. And if we can't handle their counts, they're gonna be denied by me until they reduce their counts. Or someone else comes in, or they tap their own boats, or buy an act, buy an copper. This is a strategic point that allows us a lot more flexibility. If this was in the mill in Maine. There's no option for that developer to tie into another community. Acton is putting on a brand new one million gallon a day triple plant. Are they gonna say they have excess capacity? Probably not. But again, that's a district versus a town, so. Now that they have that, they may want customers, and that may be a situation where we take on the sewer, they take on the water, but we don't know that yet. We don't know the logistics. But strategically planning, this is probably the most appropriate location.
Well, strategically, i- I mean, that's important. It's an important point. If um water. Is, was not an issue, and is, hopefully it won't be in the future. This is creating a foundation of a sustainable tax base in an area that is appropriate for that sort of development.
It should also show up in new growth as well. So Justine, I always look at it as this, it's not if they're come, it's plan. Why push so hard to continue to move on to it? It's not.
No.
And if we're not prepared, which is hard, the, the hard, the four years have been harder, the next four is gonna be hard to. We're prepared, we can handle.
So we wanna, um, did anyone, do we? Would we like to move it? Would anybody like to move it?
Sure, I'll move to refer the draft zone by law amendment for planning board of incentive in the planning directors memo to the town administrator. February twenty seven, twenty twenty four for public hearings. Okay.
Is there any further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
David.
Yeah.
And I am, yes. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Justin, for sticking around and helping. And you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, number nine, we're gonna table it for now, because Mr. Silvestine is under the weather, and he's gonna come at us at a different time, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Capital planning. The only comment is, what's in writing there? The agreement on school building committee. Planning another public forum to review the current status of the development and designs for the new school project. And it's Monday, April first, twenty twenty four at seven P M, and it will be both in person and remote, and there hasn't been much. Else happening in that regard.
Yeah, they wanted to. They, they felt like this would be uh appropriate.
Downstairs, maybe.
That's it. Maybe they meant downstairs. I, I even pointed out that like, this doesn't even lend itself very well to like more than one board.
Yeah, when they, when they, when they were trying, they were doing the um, in, in um. Steph can tell you, when they did the first two or three, um, you know, senior senate committee meetings in here, it was a disaster. They're trying to have tables in here and chairs.
No, maybe downstairs.
Maybe downstairs, yeah. Blackwell Goals, Greg, you wanna lead us to that conversation? I mean, Pat's done it a, a little bit earlier when we just got some of the things, um, but.
Yeah, so the, so the, this is, this is the board's goal, so the board. Um, it set goals in the summertime after, so it's typically after the first of July, when they do, this we are beginning to, there may be board members, and so. Um, you'll see, there's a, a number of goals and a couple of strategies just recalled underneath it. And then what I encountered after, it just sort of pointed out some from the tax that have been. Um, and so I think for the most part, the board is making, for the word of the town, all of us town hall is making a lot of progress in the right direction. Um, you know, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, like, I don't even wanna talk about too much, but let's just say, you know. Uh, COVID really threw everything out of, out of whack, but you know, there are still some compromises being made. That being said, I, there's not being any sort of like um, um, major changes to the direction of town hall at this point, so. I think, I think we're, we're doing well in all, all these battles. Um, but if the board has any questions, or if the board wants to highlight something in particular, or. I don't know, but I'm, I'm here to help.
Yeah, I guess the question would be, is it, I don't see anything, is there anything on this list that you see um. You know, as a, not a failure, but we're, we're lacking um, a, a direction or lacking any progress in, in, in any of these areas of the. Stated goal. I mean, or, or I guess, I guess, but I guess a better way to, a, a better way to ask that question is. Are there things within these um goal, four goals here in, in the following um. Are there things where you guys, as the people that are kind of charged with furthering our, our wants and needs type of thing? Are there areas in here where you think we need to do more or do better, or are there things that you think we're lacking at? Yes, it's a better way for me to ask, and I don't know how others feel.
Great, right. I'm, I'm kind of going down. I, I mean, so I could probably, as you can see from these notes, I could probably speak to. Areas where, even if it's like at a minimum, we have done things to address, so um, or they are already ongoing, so we can just give ourselves credit for stuff that's already worked. A lot of the projects that we have addressed, whether it be the, whether it be the elementary school, or thinking about sustainability goals. Just coincidentally on that topic, or maybe that's why it's fresh in our mind. We, we plan on getting a consultation from Beth Greenblatt. She's been like our consultant for the solar project for high school. And she's gonna help us sort of think about how we might do solar panels at the elementary school. So like, we, there's, there's sort of some ongoing things.
Um, can we talk about solar on the, on the fire station?
We have, but the, the approach was to sort of do it very beastly, so. It's taken us so long to get so, uh, but I haven't been to high school recently, but I've heard that we started making progress on the site.
Plus, at the high school, yeah.
At the high school, so that's good. But the idea was to do, let's do the high school, and then we'll move to. I think now the elementary school, and then the, the firehouse, and then um, this, this bad boy probably is in the group, so we probably put it over there. But, but now we have a relationship with Select, and the idea is to kind of do project by project. Select is the, is the, is the uh vendor that we're using right now for the high school. That's a very powerful risk. I don't, I don't have any, any imperatives where I feel like shortcomings, weakness, whatever it is, it's like, I think, I think. We're, I think we're devoting resources where we can. A lot of the projects are in the right direction. But I don't, I also don't think the board is unaware or shies away from any of the hard questions yet to be answered. How, how are we gonna address the aging T B W branch? What are we gonna do about, um, you know, these long-term water? Um, things, or uh solid waste recycling that forced, we need to better. I think, I think the board and the town as well does a good job of, of recognizing and not cutting weight in these problems. It's just a matter of like how we're gonna address it in the long term. Um, I don't know, I, would I be, so a lot of these, a lot of these goals are consistent every year, and a lot of these towns, a lot of towns have the same issues. Constituency information, like how do people get the, the news, how do they find out what's going on? Doing the best we can, we have the new website, we try to push things out. Um, but a lot of this stuff is just, you just have to continue to address it. And I think right now, the board has. Good communication with the other boards. Um, still be irregularly with the school committee chair. We just had a joint meeting in February. Talking about another joint meeting, um, continuing, but something you mean, I think, I think actually. I think we're making a lot of progress in the right direction for all these, but there's hard stuff to tackle still. Okay, that was my cheerleading moment, I think we go.
Okay, alright. Anybody, have any, anyone in the board have any questions or concerns about the goals that were indicated within the memo, can you write?
Um, I, I have one question. Um, on the town website. Um, does the, the town have information about how many people are accessing the site? And which, which uh components of the site they're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, you know what? I, I bet we could get that. Let me look if we can get that, because I'm curious too.
What, two in the morning now, Paul?
Uh, something like that. I'm trying not to look.
We've lost track.
The tea over there is better, so stay awake. Um, alright. Any other questions other than um how many um hits, hits we're getting on the website?
So are you able to engage more with Facebook at this point, or are you not, or are you, because I know you had said that you.
Oh, I've attempted to engage on Facebook, but it is.
Well, no, I. I get it, but I, I feel like it is one of those things that, you know.
We do post on Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still public, like inside.
Yeah, no, oh, god, no, 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 no engagement, no, no, no back and forth. Just more like getting word cut.
You're on Facebook right now?
Well, yeah.
I will, I will say this version of the um, this version of the town website that you get into to, you know, today, if you were to go to, well, not as.
Yeah.
Much, at least as far as I can see, from what my usage of it has been in what I was in the past. This one is much easier to navigate and find what you need to find, I think, but. I'm only one, I'm only one, yeah. Alright, so um, unless anybody has anything specific or extra to talk about for the goal, we can move on to the budget.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Chair, um, for the budget, I wanna highlight, I wanna review what I already spoke about, uh, with the budget, some committee meeting. So, um, following the February tenth joint budget review, I kind of had two major. I had a number of anxiety about the budget that I normally do, but there was two that kind of um were, were uh the most stress. One was um our health insurance uh premium increase we had just gotten, and it was slightly above, but not like dramatically. But it was slightly above what I projected um for my budget proposal to this budget work. And then the other stress point was um my lower. Uh, I'm sorry, so the, the state budget revenue was gonna be lower than what I projected by a significant amount, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And, and so the combination of two, I worry about how we're gonna like rebalance the budget. Um, because the budget was already, already pretty stressful um for a number of factors this year. Um, but what, you know, if you're conversating with the accounting office, what was, was sort of revealed and what I proposed to the board. Is to adjust our health insurance premium in a way that um. Alright, I'm, I'm trying to do the best I can to explain this. So over the last fifty years, and maybe my previous sessions before. I'd recommended to the board and to the town meeting that we, you know, uh, inflate, conservatively inflate how much we put aside towards health insurance. This is something I've said in the past, like, we, we deliberately put aside more to health insurance than, than what we know our premium is gonna be. And that's for a couple of reasons. One is justifiable, because you don't know what, what new subscribers, like, how many people you're gonna have, and what kind of health plan they're gonna have. If there's retirements or, or retirements, and you get people on the family plan, more than you got, they're gonna have, you need to have a buffer. You need to have enough in your health insurance budget. Um, so, so it is justifiable to have a healthy amount of health insurance. But Maynard is also, and not unlike a lot of towns, so relying on free cash. It means that if you don't spend that health insurance, it's fine, because you, because you're gonna need it for free cash or what. But that also means it's over the last six years, that, that sort of, it's been, in aggregate, it's been, been building. How much we've been conservatively inflating our health insurance. How much we've been conservatively inflating our health insurance over what our what our minimum needs of our every year. To the point where, when I, when I was looking at how much we did spending, um, and our 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 year-to-date balance has been for the last couple of years, I realized. Okay, so if I if I don't budget up to my inflated amount, then we can cover that difference. Again, what the health insurance premium was and what the state revenue um um I wasn't gonna get, and therefore, we can cover it. In in meeting our, sorry, so our consultant has said. To meet what Maya has has told us what our health insurance premium is gonna be for next year, you should budget for what Maya says you have to, plus a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And we can do that if I just don't overinflate health insurance like I have in the last year. The downside is. The likelihood is, I probably might have to spend up to that much, which means I'm not gonna get the free cash. So, um, that's not a problem for this year, that's a problem for FY twenty-six, when I'm looking to have money set aside for. You know, I already did these free cash for for um so nice, for stabilization accounts, for a huge amount that we put towards capital. Yeah, I guess there's ways to get around that too, you know, we, if we're able to put money towards capital expenditures in our operating budgets, if there's ways to get around it. To make a long story short, I'm proposing to you a balanced budget, but it's at a cost, like anything else. And what it means is, we just, I won't have the same amount of health insurance like I have in the past. Um. But we're still making our, I I didn't cut any of the budgets on any of the departments, didn't have to do that. Um, let me see, that's where we are.
Needs to write to that.
Okay, thanks. I I think, I think I, I think Jeff actually did a better job explaining at the budget subcommittee, um, but I, in my little paragraph, maybe I explained it better.
Hey. Um, anybody have any questions for Greg in regards to this budget, did he discuss it? Alright, um, so now the annual annual town meeting, what? Number one. Tell us what we're talking about with the layout hearing.
Yeah, that's right, so um Fletcher, Allen, and Ike Ferris were were roles that were proposed to be excited and over it.
I'm sorry, Greg, it's going back, we did, did we talk about the the potential for a future joint meeting? I just, no, I didn't, I didn't have any notes, we can talk about it now, but it is just a conversation about the subcommittee meeting that we brought, I think we had talked about it here last. About the need for a future meeting, and it seemed like there was desire to have one post the um. Uh, spring county meeting, so that's, yeah.
So I tried to message over to Brian Moss to see like, because I don't know the school these schedule, so I just said like, what could work in the first week of June, that was the, that was the concept.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, I haven't come up to those proposed dates, but when when we will, we're trying to have the same date proposed to both of you. But it was the school committee select board, committee, and capital planning. Quad work.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Be adding to it, um, okay. So, the taking is that.
Sorry, so so yeah, um, um. We, meaning town administration, um, neglected to schedule a layout here prior to town meeting last year to to lay out here, which is part of the process when you accept the roads. Um, in this case, Fletcher Allen, it turns, now, as council advised, you can fill the floor with the ingredients that you're gonna do. But in this case, you still need to do the layout here, and then you have to make sure when you go to town meeting in turn. It's it's now properly laid out, so now the full acceptance of the show can take place. And so that's, that's what this layout here is, because I don't think I don't, the board, you know, we did a layout here for Rockland Avenue, like, this is a standard process.
Yeah.
Didn't we do something fairly recently, what was that for? I feel like, because they, we we talked to somebody who was on, or was that after, that's, did you remember that?
I don't think we didn't hear them, but we had them in.
No, we had them in as part of the pavement management process over the past couple of years, we started to incorporate that into the roads and sort of pavement plans. So that we can identify the costs associated and all of that.
Yeah, but we had people here because we were, there were plans and everything, was.
Yep, so that's the meets and bounds survey.
But then, but then we just didn't.
That wasn't.
We didn't do the last step that's required. That.
This is probably why we have a significant amount of.
It's complicated, it's very, it's frankly, it's kind of archaic and and it's very complicated. Um, but it it is probably gonna be pretty transparent, I mean, like, because we've already been in such constant contact with all the residents on these streets and they know what's happening, I don't think you may not get any.
It's just formally the last step, right, that we failed to do before town meeting, that we have to do now. So, the last time we had the accepted streets, we did it in a rush as well, we did it in a meeting downstairs, it was several years ago.
Yep.
Um, so all this motion does is is call for the hearing.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I will move to approve the layout here, it'll be scheduled on May eighth, twenty-four at seven fifteen.
Second.
All is in favor, Mike.
He fell asleep.
I'm here, yeah.
Yes, okay, alright, got you, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah. Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
I'm yes, so we've been there, and then. Alright, I don't feel like stuff.
So these these articles are, for the most part, the, the time, actually, I take that back, I was gonna say that these are the pretty blanketed articles and and a couple of remarks, town report acceptance. Obviously, you couldn't um material, those are the standard ones. And then a number of the budget ones, you know, the general fund, free cash, um revolving accounts. Uh, water through our enterprise, ambulance enterprise, those will come later, we'll we'll finalize those numbers, and especially after my approval, great, so then you see those, we can, we can move forward with the enterprise cap. Um, but, um, the two other, I'm sorry, there's two others on here, um, community representation funds. So those were submitted by the C P C, um, for acceptance by the board on the floor. And then lastly is the um Asa Valley Regional Educational Technical Stabilization Fund. Um, um, Asa Valley been invited by the finance committee, so I think they're coming to finance committee in the rules. Um, who's playing that, so the stabilization fund, um, just to kind of simplify the explanation on it, it's, and I have the notes here, it's um. We have stabilization funds, a lot of municipalities do, and um, and so this school district is looking to create a stabilization fund, which is, you know, acceptable. Um, they just, they just need town meeting approval to be able to set it up.
So who is sponsoring that?
Uh, you would, what for?
And why are we sponsoring it?
Uh, I I think by default, you'd.
No, no, I'm I'm sorry, and and I hollered that, I missed it, I'm I'm just trying to figure out, so. Why?
I don't, so a- as a, as a member of community of Asa Valley Regional Educational School, it's.
Yeah.
Town.
That we have, we have to establish it, is that what I'm?
No, you have to, it is being asked by the school district, the Asa Valley School District, for each member of town, you. To approve them setting up the stabilization.
Okay, but we don't have to put money in it?
No, no, um, but I won't be surprised if your budget's been shut, how much your appropriations goes towards whatever the same is.
But it may not, it wouldn't increase our allocation necessarily, it would take money so we are, that we are required to put into their budget that they will be allocating as as a district.
I don't believe so, if we, that's the, you know, appropriation is a separate article, which you, you know, is incorporated into our general fund.
Right, so all this does is create a, a separate uh fund within their budget or within their.
Yes.
Their.
Yeah.
So it's not, it doesn't apply to us monetarily at all.
Not initially, but but like.
I understand.
Are are we, are we, we are not necessarily sponsoring all these articles, we're accepting them for for um. Addition to the warrant.
Officially, you are sponsoring it, because the, because the the school district themselves are are, my understanding is they are not sponsors, although they are like the. Representatives, like I I would expect um some of those school districts, I think Pam Ryanne happens to be the the resident of the board. So whether it be she or someone else from the school district, I think you can speak to this to them.
I mean, uh, yeah, I think that it's important, I mean, honestly, for us not to know really anything about it, except for the fact that they want it. You know, I mean, I don't know how we can then say that we're the sponsor.
How about, you know, after the seventh tonight, we could invite Anne or or someone from um school district to explain it better than I do.
Okay.
If if you would like.
Yeah, let's do that, we're never right, right?
Yeah.
So we'll just put this, we'll put this um article acceptance off for now.
Same with T P C, but I mean, the, so I wouldn't be able to speak to the, the worry that.
So who is, so who is, um, I see that this fifty thousand dollars for the field health, you'll feel how.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Who is administering those funds, like who, who did they award those funds to?
Whoever the applicant.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
But I mean, that.
But those, we are not sponsoring, that's a C P C, that one's. No, but it's a good question, I mean, fifty thousand dollars, they sell it by by, so like, um, great question, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You want me to, I can.
Well, I I just, I'm just kind of curious as to which, which town entity or group is overseeing that project?
I don't think we would need the C P C to come in to talk about, they could just submit an a note to us about that.
Yeah.
We probably could find it on the website if we got.
And and we probably could look at their minutes and see who the, but my guess is it has to be.
Historical society? So, just area of the school or?
So within this top of town system, I mean, through field out study, it's important, you know, it's a preservation and code upgrade, we need to build it.
That's out of the historic bucket.
Yeah.
But it's got to be, it's school property, right, so.
Is it, is it field out phone or is it a school, okay, I really, I I believe it's actually a combination of athletic director and. One of the historic society members, it's still other names. Uh, maybe, it's a joint collaboration, I believe.
I'll get you, okay. Yeah, if we could find out, that would be nice, that's kind of a heck of it. Um, on to correspondence items, number fourteen.
Wait, did you wait, 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 Mr. Chair, did the board want to accept um town report and community obsolete and community, like, did you?
Pretty well, follow up.
Oh, okay, fine.
Bring the whole, the whole thing up.
Alright, go on, excuse you, excuse you, as Jerry can continue with it.
Um, we didn't like to make a motion, we guess, this week, this week's correspondence items, A through D.
I will move to accept and approve correspondences A through D as shown.
Aaron.
Seconded.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the four, I, any of the four items in the correspondence this week?
Like all we see is uh Verizon and Comcast removing channels.
Well, the, 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 I've never even heard of them, I didn't really exist, so, maybe that's why they're taking away, alright, um, all is in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
And I am a yes. Now we have some minutes to accept from two, three.
Yep, I will move to accept and approve the meeting, the meeting minutes of February tenth and February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as shown. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion about those two sets of minutes? And discussion, we can vote, all in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
You know, I'm a yes, you know, we can move on to, um. The town administrator report and all the the other niceties below it.
I'll feedback, so, um, first of all, we had a successful, uh, present primary election, so I want to appreciate, um, all the uh. Elect workers, town clerk's office, police department, everyone, uh, school department, everyone involved in this, and of course, all the voters in turn, it's horrible. Um, I also want to thank us, Stephanie Duncan, the town administrator, for all her work and the employee record, no, employee appreciation day. Which was Friday, but we celebrated yesterday, um, and um, she did great, pancakes, pizza, all the.
Oh, we have a job.
Yep. Yep, um, and then, lastly, I want to announce to the board, a little bit of a shakeup here in town hall, the plan is to, um. I think sort of like rebalance the offices, the office space in town hall, um, and it's it's normally a thought between the two at town hall, so the town administrator's office and the town accountant's office. And the um, and the official office, which I believe is the original layout of town hall. Um, but it was switched before I got here, and I I think for whatever reason, good reason that there was. One of the biggest um downsides to the current layout is that there's no window for the essential office, and and that's not exactly customer friendly. Um, um, secondly, I do have a an O M S director that has an office on a different floor from the O M S. So now I have two offices downstairs, that facilities group has done a great job in creating, where um benefits and retirement are. That works, or we're basically doing useful offices, and they plan us to do that in the next month or two.
What are the costs associated with that?
Great question, so about eight thousand dollars, I think, do they, did I remember it right? Which um is acceptable because, first of all, we didn't hire Steve Silverstein for the first three months, so there was certain amount of budget difference between while it was paying, making it and what, so I had a little bit of an active review. And then secondly, I've had a vacant vacancy in treasurer's office for, to like, um, there was three, but we have two, so we have the budget side. Um, it's not a significant boot, but it's not everybody, you can, it's like, it's like four or five offices.
Yeah.
Um, and it's been, we've been talking about this for a long time, and we've also been really careful, and I really appreciate the thought ones that Kyle Brandon has put into this. We we kind of relied on him to figure it out, and it's really taking on really well, and say like, alright, what is the best way to do this, what's the least intrusive way? What what with like, there's no easy, convenient date to do it, but what is like the least, least painful day to do this well? Um, and actually, we've been talking about laying up a lot of town hall layout for years, I remember talking about with Andrew Marra, uh, Marra?
Marra.
Marra, thank you, and uh, and there's no easy solution to get everybody happy, but um, but, but this is better. But again, actually, a lot of this work goes to Kyle for creating those two offices downstairs, that means I have one, uh, some option.
Hmm. Any questions or comments on the town administrator report? Alright, how about, go ahead, oh, you work quicker, hurry up.
Um, actually, no, it's actually a question about that, it's worth comment to the, um, I appreciate that uh Colliers put together, or that hundreds of colleagues.
Yeah.
Commission put together, you know, kind of summarized that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, my one. Uh, my one comment would be that, you know, it says alumni field select board Q and A.
Yeah.
That makes it sound like we're running the project.
Right.
And I I I just want to be very sensitive to the fact that we're not.
Fair enough.
So I just want to make sure that that somehow, you know, when it gets out, there's, I'm sure it'll be posted, or it's been posted, or whatever. So, um, I think it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know if it's, if we could, if that could just be, you know, alumni field Q and A, you know, instead of.
Yeah, I I was also, on that poll, uh. I I think it's telling when you look at the attendance, uh, and what we were talking about previously, when you look at the attendance over the course of whatever that is, twenty event. Uh, and nine hundred, other than graduation, which I'm certain gets nine hundred people. But other than graduation, none of them would be a capacity for that, for the proposed number. Um, looks like uh the estimated size of our need was above what was.
Alright, um, so we we have a motion to make, a motion about um, Stan?
Yeah, Stan, so I just want to explain really quick, um, the the Massachusetts Municipal Association has created for the last few years, small town administrators and institutions. Group, which I am a member of because Mayor is just within the twelve thousand uh population cap, to be considered a small town. And most of the small towns, though, of course, much further west than us, um, but uh. So is also in there, and Denise DeBroski is one of the co-chairs for, right here, so, so we're in good company, Carlisle is also. Um, but as I said, most of them are rural, most of them are are much further west. So that being said, that speaks to, if you look at these, these other state priorities from the small town administrators. Um, group, allowing to pertain more to even smaller towns, western towns, regionalized towns, and and we we don't think a lot of these, but. Um, um, as symbolic gestures it may be, um, those, those of us on Stan are asking for our. Our particular executive bodies to endorse this, which again, it's just, just advocacy goes towards legislators. I don't think if I gave this to Senator Elbridge or Representative Pope, they would be surprised by any of these. But, um, you know, like I said, Berlin is one of those, and they're much more rural than we are, so. Um, but I I was looking for endorsing from the board, you don't have to, it doesn't, but it it it's a good gesture if the individual select boards from Stan. Are saying, yep, or we all, we agree with these priorities as well. Um.
That, I I think it's, from my quick review of them, um, they all look appropriate. Um. For us to be somewhat supportive of.
We agree, um, would anyone like to make a motion, behalf of Stan?
Move to endorse the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities of the small town administrators of Massachusetts as presented.
Second.
Any further conversation? No conversation in all of the favor, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
And I am, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, chair report, I went to the um. Aviva Campina, um, the senior thing last night. I went to prior Tuesday too, because I went the wrong week. Only got credit for the one meal, but I went twice. I think my wife.
At least you admitted.
My wife and I were both happy. We didn't have to cook two Tuesdays in a row, but um, I don't know, I don't know how many, I don't know how many people in the room were there for that purpose, but it was, you know. It goes to friends to me and seniors, so that was, that was a good film. When I first got there, there was a table. Full of a group of people that were um part of the friends group, and there was a couple of people that I recognized as um. Being a part of that group, so hopefully, hopefully it was a good turnout through open height and uh they were the benefit of some generosity. Um, and that was it for me, um. Went to board member reports, Mike, anything?
Uh, not a whole lot, other than just to note that while I'm over here, I'm reading a lot about local councils here that are running massively in debt. So uh, just a better appreciation for the the New England way of doing things where we're not allowed to go into debt. So, just a little transatlantic note there.
Yeah, alright.
Yes, way overshadowed Dave's normal comparative government that we get from other blackboard.
Yeah, we. Alright, so Jeff?
We're going worldwide.
Um, uh, uh, I have the the pleasure to attend a movie in support of the Rio Road um playground subcommittee. Uh, and Julie Flannery Conservation Agent was there and the, I believe the entire uh Rio Road Playground Committee was there. And so it was good to talk with them and their plans and to see other members of the community out and supporting, and I think they raised a couple thousand dollars for the playground as well. In addition, so well, well done by that group.
Alright, Justine?
Uh, I don't have anything except to say that uh according to the minutes, the alumni field health study for fifty thousand dollars is with the consortium.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, interesting.
David?
Uh, yeah, just a reminder that um the event on Sunday coming is with the uh, what the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah.
Uh, and celebrating some of our local businesses, et cetera, so um look forward to that and hope that uh. Some of us can be in attendance.
I'm being chanted. Um, I suppose we could um entertain another motion?
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mike?
Absolutely, yes.
Good night, good night. Hope everything goes well in in the, for you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Um, Jeff? Thank you. Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and our next meeting is the nineteenth.